Twenty-four, meeting of-
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Chuck Pace?
Yes.
Mr. Graham Page?
Yes.
Ms. Spillman is absent this evening. Dr. Akov?
Yes.
Cheerleading?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. Next, we have our roll call, starting with Mr. Black.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Josiah Black, School Division Council.
Matthew Hawes, Superintendent.
Dr. Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
Ellen Osborne, Scottsville District.
Rebecca Berlin, Whitehall District.
Judy Lee, Ivana District.
Kaye Dacov, Jack Jewett District.
Graham Page, Willow District.
Chuck Pace, Rio District.
Fernanda Cisneros, Student Rep.
Rosalind Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer.
Christine Diggs, Chief Technology Officer.
Christine Thompson, Clerk of the Board.
Daphne Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent.
All right, thanks, everyone. Let's stand for the Pleasure Allegiance. Now, we'll have our Moment of Silence. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Lee, I do want to interrupt the meeting. I believe that Fernanda has an announcement.
With admiration and appreciation, we extend our heartfelt thanks to Albemarle County School Board for their remarkable dedication and leadership in shaping the educational landscape of our community. As stewards of our children's future, they navigate through challenges with unwavering commitment and grace. Their role transcends more mere governance. They are architects of vision, advocates for accountability, and champions of continuous improvement in student learning. Despite their diverse backgrounds, they stand united in purpose, weaving a tapestry of collaboration and collective action. Beyond the confines of board meetings, they invest boundless hours in honoring their craft, their professional learning, engaging with community, and immersing themselves in vibrant tapestry of school life. Their passion for learning and compassion for students, staff, and community members alike propel them forward in their quest for equity, excellence, family, and community, and wellness in Albemarle County Public Schools. In honoring their tireless effort, we recognize February as School Board Appreciation Month. Let us seize this moment to express our gratitude and admiration for the Albemarle County School Board's unwavering commitment to cultivating a brighter future for our children. In honor of you, the Albemarle County School Board, here's a brief video which we hope will convey our students' appreciation for your dedication and hard work.
Thank you, Albemarle County School Board.
Thank you, School Board members, for all your help.
We just want to thank you for all you do for all of our schools.
Thank you, School Board members, for everything.
Thank you, Albemarle County School Board members.
Thank you, Albemarle School Board members, for everything you do for us.
Thank you, School Board members, for doing everything for us and helping us with-
Thank you, Albemarle County School Board.
We just want to thank you for what you do for this school, and thank you for all the things that you do in our schools.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you so much. We did not know about that. We were very surprised by that, and that's really lovely. And just speaking for myself, it's a real honor to be doing this work, so thank you. I appreciate being able to do it.
So next, we have our Budget Work Session, Part One. Maya?
Good evening. I'm Maya Kumazala, Director of Budget and Planning, and this evening, I'm going to facilitate our first work session with regards to the FY25 Draft Funding Request. Before we jump into the content, I just wanted to do a quick review of the budget document. Does everyone have their binder? If not, I brought a couple-
I actually forgot mine today. It was on my desk to bring and put in my backpack. Thank you. Oh, absolutely. I won't write it, I promise.
All right, everyone else set? Okay. So our budget document is structured similar to how our financials are structured. So this is a visual that shows you that Section A is our total school budget. It's a summary and overview of the School Division and the School Division's financials. Within the total school budget, we have the School Fund, which is our day-to-day operating fund, and we have special revenue funds. So over on the left, we'll focus on School Fund. If you flip past Section A to Section B, it'll show you information about our School Fund revenues. And then in Section C, you'll find information about our School Fund expenditures, and our overall expenditure assumptions are located there. Our School Fund expenditures are broken down, as you know, into school-based expenditures and department-based expenditures. So there's a tab and a section for those school expenditures in Section D and department expenditures in Section E. And then in Section F, you'll find information about our special revenue funds, which are accounted for separately. And for anyone following in the public, the budget document is available on the budget website, and there's a quick link for you to get there. Within each of the sections, here are some items of interest. If you're looking, this is just a very simplified index. Section A has the message from the Superintendent and General School Division information, as well as a budget introduction, goals, guidelines, and policies. If you want to see high-level information, like what is the total budget, how's that broken out, you can find that in Section A. In Section B, you'll find both detailed and summary-level revenue information. Section C has overviews of the expenditures. If you're looking for compensation, which we'll talk about this evening, assumptions historically, you'll find that there. How do we budget for healthcare and retirement? That information can be found in Section C. Section D, you'll find the breakdown by each school. What is the budget by each of our school locations? In Section E, you'll again see a budget by each of our departments. And as a reminder, a department is established because we have expenditures that can't be directly tied to one school location, so we have departments to represent the types of costs that are incurred. In Section F, you'll find information about special revenue funds, including grant funds like our title programs. And then in Section G, this is what we focused on during the January 25th Budget Work Session, as we kind of went through those materials. Those are all the inputs and the assumptions that we use to build up all the budgets in the other sections. Are there any questions about the budget document? All right. So here's our agenda for this evening, and as we go through each of these items, you'll see page references on the top-right corner of the slides. If you want to look in the budget book to figure out, oh, where can I read more about it, you can just look on the top-right of the following slides. I'll first provide an overview of our technical and non-discretionary changes when compared to the FY24 adopted budget. I'm going to have HR staff join me to talk about VRS and healthcare. And then our second item is a compensation market update and proposal. After that, we have a break planned, and when we come back, our Student Services team will be here to talk about the Social Emotional Supports proposal, and then I'll close this out with State Revenue Updates and Operating Principles for Budget Reductions. This is an overview of our expenditure summary as presented in the FY25 Draft Funding Request. The total expenditure request is $272,985,000. This is how we break out our expenditures in terms of state reporting categories and what the intended purpose of those funds are. Seventy point nine percent of the expenditures are going towards direct instruction. Other major categories include facilities, transportation, and admin attendance and health. If you want to know more about what's in these categories, you can find that in Section C, pages seven to nine. You'll start to recognize this pie. It does look very similar from year to year. This is the, well, what's changing. If you compare that pie chart to FY24's adopted budget, these are the changes that you see from year to year. First, we eliminate one-time FY24 expenditure. So when we budgeted for use of fund balance in '24, and we said, we're going to pay for some one-time items there, well, that money's not there in '25, so the first thing we did was eliminate that funding. The baseline adjustment of $4.3 million, those include changes that we made mid-year that were not budgeted for, that are accounted for in the following FY25 year. So examples of this are the 2% pay increase that we instituted in January, and the healthcare rates that we implemented also in January of this year. The technical and non-discretionary changes are those, well, what are those new changes we anticipate starting July 1st? The net amount in that category is about half a million dollars, and I'll go over some of the key points there. And then proposals to maintain levels of service is $10.4 million, and we'll go over these in details between tonight's work session and next week's work session. The total budget-to-budget change is about $13 million. So this is the overview of that half a million dollars you saw in technical and non-discretionary changes. In this category, we include inflation, a change in the transfer to technology replacement, and a change in the transfer to IDEA. The ones that are dotted at the bottom, those are the ones we'll go over in a little bit more detail. So we'll start first with the budgeted enrollment decrease. This is providing a savings of about $505,000, which equates to about a net 6.03 FTE. This represents FTE allocation changes across every school and category. It's not, you know, six full-time positions. But what we do is we apply the staffing standards to our projected enrollment for next year, as well as our projection for free and reduced lunch, which, you know, drives a lot of our staffing. So when you apply the new projections for next year, using our current approved staffing standards, we see a savings. This is because if you follow the green dotted line, that's the budgeted or the projected number of students. In 2023, '24, we budgeted a little bit higher than what we actually saw. So the actual enrollment is shown in the blue solid line. Because when we do budgeting, we compare, well, what is the budget this year to what's the budget next year, when you look at the budgeted-to-budgeted enrollment number, you can see a decrease there, when in fact, well, we actually are anticipating an increase when you compare it to the number of students we have now. So that budgeted enrollment decrease of 97 students equates to roughly the savings that we're seeing as part of this change. Are there any questions? So the next item to talk about is the Bright Stars Fund. This is a pre-kindergarten program that's state and locally funded. It provides early intervention and prevention services, and we do this in collaboration with Albemarle County Department of Social Services. We have classrooms, 11 classrooms across seven different elementary schools that are listed there, and each classroom enrolls a maximum of 18 students and is staffed with a full-time, highly-qualified teacher and teaching assistant. We are anticipating some changes in this program when it comes to the budget. This is based on the Governor's Introduced Budget. The FY24 adopted number shows you, well, that's our current number of classrooms of 18, staffed with 19.5 staff. Currently, we have local funding budgeted at $747,000, and state funding budgeted at $786,000. Previously, for the FY24 adopted budget, the state funding, you can see, is roughly equal to the local funding. That's because the state contribution was capped at our, our LCI was capped at .5, so the share of cost was roughly 50/50. In the Governor's Introduced Budget, that cap is taken off, and so the state is only providing the share of their funding, which is 1 minus our LCI, and as we've discussed, our LCI has gone up significantly. So that's causing the increase in the need for local funding, and then the decrease in what the state is funding. In addition, the total budget is going up because they've also determined that we have a higher number, a higher need in the area, so we have been provided a higher allocation of slots that the funding is based on. And if you're looking for this budget, this is a special revenue fund, so the details of that are in Section F. But the reason why it shows up as an impact to our FY25 operating budget is because we transfer an amount into that grant fund, so it shows up as an expenditure as part of the school fund. And that's the number we're focused on. Here's the local funding of $296,000. That's showing as an increase to the school fund. Are there any questions about Bright Stars? So the next pretty major item in the technical category is KTEC, the Charlottesville-Albemarle Technical Education Center. This is a regional education center that helps high school students and adults obtain the jobs that they seek, and currently, it's jointly operated by our School Division and Charlottesville City Schools. So as you know, next year will be the first year that KTEC is solely operated by the city, but we do anticipate that our students will continue to attend at the same level that they've attended historically. And tuition rates are set based on a MOU that we have with the city. A quick historical look at what our enrollment has been at KTEC. The chart is showing the number of our students at each of our high schools that have attended KTEC, starting in 2020. And then at the bottom, you can see what our contribution to KTEC has been. It slowly increases over time as a result of compensation increases and the proportion of the number of students that, the number of students that ACPS sends versus other schools, and that was mostly driven by formula. For next year's budget, we are projecting a fairly flat number of students to attend, but our contribution is going down as a city is owning more of the costs of running that program, since it is based for the city. It's solely owned by the city. So the net savings to us from this year to next will be about $290,000. Any questions about KTEC?
What's the state flow through?
Sorry?
Sorry, what does the state flow through?
That's money that we get from the VDOE for KTEC programming, but it came through us before, and we pass it on directly to KTEC, so that just goes away. It was a neutral revenue and expenditure source. Right? So are there any other questions about other technical non-discretionary changes before we switch over to some HR items? Okay?
Good evening, Board Members. One of the non-discretionary items we'll talk about this evening is one of our benefits, the Virginia Retirement System. For context, the Virginia Retirement System is governed by the Code of Virginia and regulated by a body at the state level. So while we are members of the retirement system, the terms of that membership, the cost structure, employer and employee contributions are all dictated at the state level to us. This evening, Jenny Sterns, who's one of our benefits advisors, is here to talk us through some of the changes to VRS at the state level.
Hello, how are you? As Dan shared, Albemarle County Public Schools is a Virginia Retirement System member. All full-time employees become VRS members when they're hired. Participation is required, and as he said, it's governed by the Virginia General Assembly. Members are placed in one of these three plans, Plan One, Plan Two, or the Hybrid Plan, depending upon their hire date with the VRS employer and their vesting date. Non-discretionary fees are paid by both the member and the employer. The employer fees vary based off of VRS's classification of professional and non-professional positions. VRS classifies our educators, our managers, and our administrative staff under the professional classification, and they classify our skilled trade staff in transportation, building services, and child nutrition under the non-professional classification. We have 43% of our members that fall into Plan One and Two, and though the Hybrid Plan is only 10 years of age, we have 57% in that population. All three plans calculate their pension by taking the member's average final compensation and multiplying it by their plan multiplier, and then multiplying that by their years of service. This calculates their annual income or annual pension. That's divided by 12 and paid on the first of each month from the time the employee retires for the rest of their life. Plan One members, as an example that I'm giving here, this is assuming you have a Plan One, Plan Two, and Hybrid member retiring with an average final compensation of $50,000 and providing 30 years of service in VRS. A Plan One member will retire with $2,125 a month in a pension. A Plan Two member would receive $2,063 a month, a difference of $62. A Hybrid member will receive a monthly pension of $1,250. Keep in mind, the Hybrid member's plan is just that. It is a hybrid of two types of retirement savings, their pension, which is a defined benefit, and then defined contribution accounts. I'll talk about the defined contribution accounts in just a moment, but I first wanted to share that the changes to the VRS plans were made to ensure their sustainability. As generations decrease in size and fewer employees enter the workforce, as more employees retire and leave the workforce, these changes allow the pension benefit to continue for both our current and future employees. All VRS members contribute 5% of their annual salary towards their retirement. Plan One and Plan Two members contribute that 5% towards their pension. Hybrid members contribute 4% towards their pension and 1% towards their 401A or defined contribution plan. Hybrid members are also provided the opportunity to contribute an additional 4% of their salary to the defined contribution 457 account. Albemarle County Public Schools is required to match both the required 1% to the 401A, and they are also required to match a portion of any voluntary funds the employee makes to the 457 account. Between a Hybrid member's mandatory and voluntary defined contributions, along with required employer-matching funds, Hybrid members may have up to 8.5% of their annual salary invested in defined contribution accounts. This potentially closes any gap that they have between a Plan One and Plan Two retirement pension and the Hybrid retirement pension. Currently, VRS collects one fee based on the employee classification. For an example, if you have three teachers, one in each plan, VRS would collect 17.83% of their salary for employer fees. If the Hybrid teacher makes voluntary contributions to their 401A or 457, VRS currently takes the matching funds from that 17.83% and puts it into the defined contribution account. In fiscal year '25, VRS is requiring a hybrid rate separation. This will cause two main changes for the employers. VRS first is going to decrease the defined benefit fee. You'll see that for professionals, it will decrease from 17.83% to 15.42%. For the non-professional group, it will decrease from 6.52% to 4.59%. What is different for next year is that the matching funds, they will no longer take that from their own defined benefit fee. They will require Albemarle County Public Schools to pay a fee in addition to that. The results are an overall decrease of fees for both Plan One and Plan Two members. It is maintaining the same fee for Hybrid professionals. It is slightly increasing the Hybrid non-professional fee by less than 1%. In other words, the fees remain the same or decreased for approximately 2,200 employees, but it will be increasing for our smallest group, which is the non-professional hybrid plan, which has, right now, about 233 employees in there. By VRS separating the defined benefit and the defined contribution fees, this allows the defined contribution fees to transition from a monthly to a bi-weekly billing, providing faster deposits into the defined contribution accounts, giving the employees' investments more time to be invested and grow for our employees. I know that's a lot of information in a short period of time. Do you have any questions for that? Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Now, I want to talk about some changes that are coming for our health insurance budget. As we get ready to talk about this, I want to step back and provide some context around our health insurance plan. We are self-insured, and that means that we bear all the risk of the costs of our insurance plan. In a traditional, fully-insured model, the insurance provider bears and assumes all of that risk. So when a patient goes to the doctor, the claim is filed with the insurance company, they reimburse it, and then they bear, if that claim is $2 million, they bear that cost, whereas the employer and employee are just paying the same premium all year. That comes back, though, because if that insurance company is paying out very high, very expensive claims, those rates are going to go up. That insurance company cannot pay out more than they take in. For our self-insured plan, we have a healthcare reserve fund, and that fund is made up of employee and employer contributions. On this slide, we list the six agencies that make up our healthcare fund. We're joint with the county government and several other agencies. So every pay period, those contributions the employer and employee share go into the healthcare fund. Meanwhile, claims are filed with our provider, Anthem. We've bought into their network of providers their discounts, and we pay for their processing and adjudication of claims. Those claims are reimbursed by Anthem, who passes the bills to us, and they're reimbursed out of that healthcare fund. and they're reimbursed out of that healthcare fund. That fund also covers several other costs, administrative and overhead fees. We do have a stop-loss reinsurance program. So in those instances, when claims get extremely expensive, currently over $250,000, then we move to a fully insured plan that picks that up. Our healthcare fund also covers a wellness program. We talked about that some with the HR annual report a couple weeks ago. And then it maintains a reserve balance, and that balance is very important. And I'm out of order, all right. This chart is showing the trajectory of the healthcare fund for the last four years. So you can see back in Plan Year '20, the green bar is showing the revenue, employer and employee contributions. The blue bar is showing the expenditures. Revenue was exceeding expenditures, so it was building our reserve. There's two black lines that go across the screen. They indicate the target balance we want in that fund, which is roughly the equivalent to two to four months of claims that are filed. That protects us if there's a high claim period. There's money to keep the fund solvent. What you can see is that over the last three years, claims have exceeded revenue. And that has the net effect of drawing down that fund balance. That blue, dark blue shaded area is slowly declining. Until last year, it ended just below the bottom, the floor for what we want in that reserve. So we've been working on strategies to shore this up and make sure our healthcare fund is solvent. The biggest one is a one-time infusion from the fund balance last year. That fund balance, that's the amount over 2% that we have left at the end of the year. And that amount comes to about $2.5 million. That will bring us up pretty close to the floor of that two months. We're also looking at, I'm sorry, we've actually just completed a dependent eligibility audit that looked at people who are on our plan but are not eligible to be covered by our plan, dependents that no longer should be on the plan. About 130 ineligible participants were removed, which has a projected savings of just about $700,000. We are looking at the establishment of an employee health clinic. And that clinic will have the opportunity to provide savings in that employees, rather than going to a primary care doctor, going to an urgent care, or going to the emergency room for non-emergency visits, can go to the clinic, receive care. And since these are staff that are paid and part of the clinic operating costs, there's no claim filed. So there's a net savings in the cost of providing that care. I spoke in the HR annual report about our wellness strategic plan, and I hope you're going to be hearing a lot more about that pretty soon, in the next couple weeks. And finally, we're going to be doing some looking at plan design. In order to contain costs, we're going to have to look at the structure of that plan and how we're providing benefits and what that will look like going forward. So looking forward from where we are today, you can see that our healthcare fund balance is going to take some time the way things are going to get back into that area we want it. Within this multi-year look, this is operating on the assumption that the plan revenue, the employer and employee shares, are exceeding claims. I can tell you from a meeting I was in earlier this week that the January bill exceeded what we believed and projected it to be. So we already know those claims are continuing to rise. The rise in healthcare costs is driven by a number of factors. One of the biggest is that during the COVID lockdown, of course, people stopped going to the doctor. Doctors weren't accessible. So as a result to that, people with chronic conditions weren't getting treated. Those conditions became significantly worse, and those claims are more expensive now. Another major driver for us is just the inflation that we've all faced in the last three years. Doctors and providers have multi-year contracts with insurance companies. Those contracts are being renewed now. So the providers have borne those inflationary costs to run their businesses. Now that they're renewing, they're passing them on. So they're coming to us now through those higher claim costs. Major drivers that are out there affecting employers and plans across the country. There are therapeutics and biologic drugs that where the cost, these are important treatments and very valuable, but the cost is skyrocketing. Specifically within the area of obesity, which is a national epidemic, there are medications being prescribed, some off-label, that will cost tens of thousands of dollars a year and require the patient to stay on it the rest of their life. So these are all driving our costs through the roof. So as part of our request in this budget, we're looking to add $1.6 million, and this is not discretionary. So you can see the impact on the employer's share of health insurance here. And this assumes that those strategies come into play. We'll be working on a lot of those wellness strategies going forward to try to keep those increases under control. Any questions about the health insurance?
I mean, it just sounds like this is something that we're going to have to look at now, and I know in some of the strategies, like, it's unfortunately here to come, and so we should probably anticipate continuing to worry about this and continuing to think about how do we deal with it, figure out how to deal with it as a nation, but as an organization, without passing as little as we can onto our employees.
What I appreciate is the strategy we're engaging in with our local government counterparts around both wellness and around the clinic. Those are long games. They're not going to be fast solutions. They're not going to stop the climb in the next few months. But over time, that should control and slow that growth.
I think one of the things that Dan's talked about recently with the HR department is doing some surveying as we get started next year to hear from our employees about things they're interested in in terms of their, the healthcare plan and health insurance. I really appreciate you all embarking on that because there are, while the expenses are increasing, there are a number of ways that we can better serve our employees in terms of their, their health plans, really is what it is. It's not necessarily health insurance anymore. It's really about a health plan. So the HR department's been doing a lot of work in this area, and I think we'll see some better, we'll get some data, and we'll have a lot more choices for our employees moving forward.
Thanks.
Dan, what percentage of covered people are in ACPS versus other governmental entities?
Our employees and their dependents make up about 75% of the plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Brody Downs. I work with Mr. Redding and Ms. Sterns in Human Resources. I'll start with the slide I believe you all saw last week in the superintendent's needs-based budget presentation. As Dr. Haas indicated, we cannot achieve our mission without market-driven compensation and benefits programs. Our program within the School Division emphasizes the importance of sustainable wages and focuses on competitive pay and standardizing increases, general wage increases for all employees. I wanted to start by discussing why it is important to maintain a purposeful and robust compensation program. This is a good reminder slide, and I know we have one new board member here tonight. And this also provides an overview of what aspects of a compensation program are most critical. A sound compensation program addresses two basic components, market competitiveness and internal equity. An organization should be monitoring its competitive market and compensating for roles at a competitive rate. And then an organization should also maintain systems to ensure that roles and people are compensated equitably. The School Division has an adopted market comprised of 15 school divisions, strategically selected based on a number of different factors. This allows us to benchmark our compensation levels against a consistent set of school divisions year over year. And we do so by targeting the 60th percentile as we benchmark by beating, quote-unquote, "the market" by 10%. This slide provides an overview of the School Division's adopted markets' general wage increase information. You'll see the top row shows the increase that the School Divisions within our adopted market provided in July 1 of 2023. The second row shows which school divisions within our adopted market implemented the mid-year adjustment, the 2% adjustment that was partially funded by the state. And the bottom row reflects what is being proposed for July 1 of '24. In other words, other school divisions are having the very same conversations that we're having tonight. And these proposed increases have not been approved at this point. So they are just projections. Give you a moment to digest the numbers. I should also point out, too, one of the things to consider on this slide in particular is, pre-COVID, and I think we mentioned this in December, but pre-COVID, that top row, there is a lot of variance, a lot of peaks and valleys. And pre-COVID, what you saw was much more consistent. It would be normal to see no more than a percent variance from your top locality to your bottom locality, maybe a percent and a half. So it was pretty normal across the board. And what you'll see in that July 1 of '23, what we saw took place was kind of the continuation of what we have seen over the past couple of years since COVID. We're seeing organizations regulate their general wage increases a bit and try to make up for lost ground within their adopted markets. You'll see the bottom row in terms of what we're seeing with the projections, you're seeing that come back down. You're seeing a little bit less variation also, although there is a little bit more than what we saw in pre-COVID times. This slide is a helpful visual reflecting how the School Division compares to its adopted market right now, as well as our key contiguous market, Charlottesville City Schools, with regard to its teachers on the master's degree scale. We benchmark most often against the master's scale. Most of our teachers are on that scale. This graph shows five-year increments. So you're seeing essentially the career trajectory over the course of a teacher's 30-year career, right? So this is essentially all of our steps. And this is also reflective of the 2% adjustment that took place in January. So this is where we currently sit. I want to point out that the School Division is exceeding its target for a majority of the life cycle of a teacher's career. It's not until Step 25 that the market starts to catch up. And then you'll see, once you hit Step 30, you'll see the market exceeds the School Division. This slide reflects what is projected for July of '24. So there are certainly a few assumptions in this graph. First, this assumes that our adopted market has proposed, that what our adopted market has proposed to their respective school boards is what will carry. This also takes into consideration the School Division providing the 3% wage increase as indicated in the superintendent's needs-based budget. Again, in this model, Albemarle continues to exceed its target of the adopted market's 60th percentile until those last five years. In addition to the initiatives brought forward in the superintendent's need-based budget, HR is also observing other areas where the School Division falls below the market. As a topic of discussion and given our current and forecasted placement amongst the market, the School Division could consider repurposing a portion of the 3% general wage increase to tackle other areas of need where we are out of alignment with our market. Our Academic Leadership Compensation Program, or ALCP, you'll hear it referred to as more frequently, provides stipends to teachers for various and critical roles in addition to their regular duties. The School Division falls well short of what we see other localities within our market compensating for similar roles. For example, the ACPS pays $650 for Student Council Association sponsor. The market midpoint for that is 2024. Another example is yearbook advisor. The ACPS pays $490, and the market midpoint is $3,300. We're also seeing that the School Division lags the market in terms of paying employees who are separating for unused sick leave. In lieu of paying for unused sick leave currently, the School Division has provided a longevity bonus. But that only applies to a certain few employees that meet certain criteria, including being 50 years of age. And the value of the longevity bonus is much lower than what we see the market paying for unused sick leave upon separation. The third area of need is decompressing the lower pay grades within our classified scales. When the School Division increased its base pay to $15 an hour just a few years ago, to avoid increasing all pay grades, we compressed the bottom seven pay grades to get our minimum up to $15 an hour. The result is that the pay grades on the lower end of the scale are now incredibly compressed. This presents challenges in the event the School Division needs to adjust a pay grade classification to reflect the market. In other words, if we observed a role and pay grade eight being 8% below market, we couldn't react by simply moving one pay grade. We would have to move several pay grades to offset that. And that jeopardizes internal equity in terms of how we value roles and how we place them within our pay grade system. So those are some observations that HR has considered over the past year as we've reflected upon the market data and market research that we've gathered since the summer. Are there any questions? I guess I'll go back.
Do you have any dollar amounts attached to these three areas?
Yes. Yes. So we have, we've costed out implementation of the unused sick leave, and it comes out to about $400,000 year over year. The modeling we did took into, takes into consideration how high you want to, so where you set your threshold. So there's variables within that. But what we did is we looked at what other localities do. We benchmarked what we felt would be optimal for us, and it comes out to about $400,000 for costing purposes. ALCP is much more expensive to carry that out. So I think the best approach would be to phase it over a few years. And there's a couple ways you can do that. I think we can, you know, partner with EVAC and other groups as to what is the most logical and effective way to meet the needs now, but also focus on how we can continue to meet the needs in the long term.
Are the numbers for ALCP available somewhere?
Like what we pay? What our current payments are? Yes, sir. I can, I can shoot a link to Ms. Thompson, and she can forward that to the board.
Appreciate it.
Just my back-of-the-envelope calculations look like for every half percent in terms of compensation is about $950,000. So looking, so, and I've also, well, that's where we could shove some, move some of that money. There's about a close to $1 million for every half a percentage salary increase.
That's one of the things that Dan and Brody and Dr. Kaiser have talked a little bit about is differentiating. And so we've got a 3% across-the-board comp increase. What, if, if you... What, if you, if you potentially took some of that and put it toward the leave payout and the ALCP stipends, the thing you would want to be sure is that you could have, try to have as broad an impact as possible with those other variables so that it hits everyone the same, as, with as much fidelity as possible as, as a pay increase would. So one, I guess one question I had, Brody, just for clarification, is when you talk about the leave payout, is that across the, would that impact all employee classifications? Okay, so then, so that's like an example, right? So if you said we would take a little bit away from the overall percentage pay increase and you applied it to a leave payout, that would have the impossible impact of all classifications, so you feel pretty good about that. The ALCP is a little trickier because I don't know that all, are all employees eligible for ALCP stipends?
Teachers.
So you'd have to figure out, how do you also use stipending, a stipending program or some extra pay program to impact classified staff? And maybe be creative about that. Because that, for my, that's the only hiccup I have, is that taking the potential to hit all the employees with a comp increase and using it for these programs, which are also huge, huge, when you look at that difference with where we are in our market, it's jaw dropping. And that's a morale buster for the staff because, you know, the people that do yearbook and do student publications, they're passionate about it and they love doing it, but it's not really fair to have them do it for such a lesser rate than their contemporaries across the state, so. But I, you know, I want to encourage that kind of thinking that you guys brought forth last week to try to figure out how does it, not just a one-size-fits-all, but how do we hit these other areas that are real morale functions? Thank you.
Brody, do you know what the county is talking about in terms of a salary increase, A? And then I did notice that the numbers you had for the city were only like one and a half, and I was hearing from the state it might be two and a half. Do you know? There are numbers that are swirling about.
So one of the, one of the tricks in this bottom row is its projections, right? So we are, one of the really, the blessings, and we talked about this in December, is that we have a few months that we can continue to ask these questions, right? In years past, we would come in October, and it was sort of a, this is what we're seeing, let's make a decision and do budget prep with the joint boards, but we have a few more months, right, going forward that we can go out and get and collect information. Yeah. So I do not believe these numbers will stay this way. You will see some, some movement in there. Virginia Beach, for example, we could not find any information on a, on a GWI, or general wage increase, sorry, but what they are doing is they are taking, I think it's over $900,000, and they're forwarding that to have equitable separation in their steps, and they're targeting 1.5%. And that's how they are using those dollars this year.
That's hard to capture in a table like this.
It is. Charlottesville City indicated in their budget presentation, I think it was last week, they're looking at a step increase. Their steps do not have equitable, so 1.5 is a ballpark, is a ballpark there. And then, sorry.
Is there a number to add to fixing the compression on the pay scale for classified staff?
So we're still looking at the modeling. It may be largely cost neutral, and I say that with a bit of reservation because it's always important to kind of under-promise and over-deliver. But one of the issues that we're seeing is that some of the, some of the separations from one pay grade to the next are literally the 0.8%. And so you've got, and so that most of our pay grades historically were 7.5%, now they are generally about 7.29%. And so what we're trying to do is get back to that meaningful separation. And so when you look at where certain pay grades currently are, and having it not jeopardize the internal equity in terms of how we value one job from the next, is you can actually place them, if it fits well enough, into what the projected pay grade will be. So it doesn't necessarily mean you have to increase or go up or down, you're just sort of trying to fit it into the most logical place, given where it currently is. Some work coming.
So with the sick leave payout, did you, you may have said this, I wasn't quite sure you said it or not, but would there be, would teachers have to be in the division for a certain length of time before they would be able to tap into that?
Yeah, there's a lot of different ways you can do it. One of the models that we've landed on is that you had to be in the school division for several, like five years before that there was an eligibility.
Oh, that's what you said, okay.
Yeah, and then we actually, as sort of a retention model, would increase the percentage payout in five-year increments. So there's a lot of different ways you can do that. We see, we see it done a lot of different ways from one locality to the next. So it really is a nice opportunity for us to take a look at what works best for Albemarle, and you can also tackle a couple of different needs with, with one policy.
So, and the other thing about putting some money there would be that that might be an incentive for teachers to
Yeah.
be careful about taking their days, if they knew they would be eventually compensated for those things.
So just to clarify, the compression fix, no one would lose money in that, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just, my brain doesn't work with how it would be neutral.
Out of our market, about how many of the divisions, you say most of them do, but how many of the divisions do have sick leave payout policies? Or do you know roughly?
Off the top of my head, I do not know. It's, I would say roughly half, just based on ones I can recall. I can get that information to you in a follow-up.
Okay. Does Charlottesville have it?
I do not, off the top of my head.
Okay, all right.
So, so what would be the next step with this? Are you gonna kind of come back to us with some potential models? Do you want us to suggest, like, is that the?
Yeah, I think it would be really helpful. Knowing that there's an openness to repurpose a percentage of the GWI is really helpful. So I think we can take a step back and look at what programs are probably going to be most meaningful and impactful and of what, you know, the greatest need in the short term, and then I think to come back and provide some, some recommendations or some options.
So what I'm hearing you say is, is the board open to you exploring that and bringing back options?
Correct, yeah.
I, I mean, I think so. This might not be popular. I am not as, like, just personally, on the sick leave payout. I understand how it can be a motivation. I would rather focus on things that are closer term, I mean, to staff right now, I mean, rather than what might happen in the future. I know that could be seen as an incentive or because it's a benefit that others have, but I would rather really think about what are we doing right now to kind of increase kind of what's in people's pockets today. Fellow workers.
I mean, I think that's a good point. I am open to seeing the models, though, and I'm open to seeing, you know, so that we would have a chance to sort of weigh those options.
I would agree, I'm open to looking at the total compensation package and how we can best support our staff and differentiate where we need to. And I'd like to see numbers, of course.
Yeah. Ms. Kumazawa would like me to let you know there's a break.
Oh, all right, fantastic. Thank you very much.
And then Tier Three represents a few students that would need support. It's a structure, it is not built in stone, but there are a network of professionals that the School Board has helped the Division create to support our students. I'd like to honestly even propose moving from a pyramid to something like a net, like a fishing net of sorts, because all these professionals from school counselors and SEL counselors at Tier One, and even moving within the tiers to our special education teams and working with even the Department of Human Services and Social Services and Region Ten, to our school psychologists and Health Connect America therapists. It's fluid and moving, but that image I have of a net, of each person as a strand in that net, and the more we focus with intentionality, the stronger and more fine of a mesh it becomes to catch all students that need support. And I do believe that this proposal is doing just that.
Yeah, so I wanted to take a moment and talk about our SEL counselors. So talking about personalization for them. This is three individuals that I wanted to highlight. At the bottom, we have Alana Horni, who is the SEL counselor at Western Alamo Moro. To the left, you have Mark McCoy, who is the SEL counselor at Burley Middle School. And to the right, you have Courtney Zenter, who is the SEL counselor at Baker Butler Elementary. I'd also like to note that Courtney Zenter was recently named a nominee for the Classified Staff of the Year. These are just a few of the examples, or I'm going to talk about just a few of examples of individuals who are in our schools currently supporting students in the role of the SEL counselor. First and foremost, I want to talk about how they know that they're students. These three individuals, between the three of them, they know 2,458 students between three schools. It's something that we had heard consistently going around talking with principals, is that these are individuals that know their students, that are making connections and supporting students. And it was very similar anytime I've talked to any principal about the SEL counselor role. For the sake of brevity, the question on the table is, how do SEL counselors add value to our schools and support our students? Well, these are individuals that can be the warm demander of our students. Like many of us, even as adults, students have experienced difficulties returning to a new normal post-COVID. Across the board, students do not have the self-regulation skills that they had prior to COVID, and are having a harder time processing everyday stressors. While we may think the subject matter that being taught in the classroom is separate and that students can compartmentalize, we know that that's not the case. School is a part of life, and life is a part of school. So the SEL counselors are the people who are partnering with schools and families to work one-on-one or in groups with students that need additional supports, learning how to self-regulate, and ultimately be, sorry, echoing, be functional and flourishing students in our classroom communities. I think it's important to note that as we work with administrators, we are continually hearing that behaviors are intense. However, it is getting better in that these individuals are part of the current solution supporting students in developing these valuable skills.
So a little bit more of the why. As you heard from Mr. Nelson, the post-pandemic needs still remain, but this is a database decision that we're proposing. We utilize information from the DESA, which is an instrument that measures the social-emotional learning strengths in various areas of students within our schools. So we did look at that. Panorama, which is a survey that measures the climate and different components of our school. And we also looked at discipline and chronic absenteeism data in order to really undergird this proposal. While we looked at it, we also, I do not want to give the impression that we are gonna, right, sit back on our laurels, I guess is the old cliche. We're just not go asking, hey, let's just keep things as they are, that we at Central Office, in the schools, as leaders, do see that we can add value to the resource should this move forward. And it would be a more direct utilization of evidence-based practices, a more consistent approach across the board. We're working with human resources to really review licensure and experience so that we could appropriately set high expectations and responsibilities for these professionals. By doing that, we believe we could provide, or at least facilitate, do what we need to in terms of very focused professional development. And then lastly, which we're going to spend a little bit of time on, is explaining the staffing standards. It's, so how are you going to utilize these resources previously? And we'll talk about the context of some previous work and how they were utilized and what we are proposing. So this staffing standard, I was asked to make a proposal. How would we thoughtfully use, and I am a true believer in staffing standards, thoughtfully use SEL counselors, so social-emotional learning counselors? And I started by looking at various professional helping groups. What are the published standards, just to get a sense, right? Just to wrap my head around what those might be. So I've noted some of those there, in addition to the Virginia Department of Ed and the Virginia Code and Regulations. And I landed on my proposal, and our proposal, is 750 students to one full-time equivalent of a SEL counselor, with a base, right? So much like we, I alluded to earlier, historically with school counselors, with a base of a full-time employee at every school building, okay? We put in, which we'll explain a bit more in this proposal, two additional FTEs based on the data and the need we feel are supported by what we're going to share with you in just a few moments. But that is, that is our pitch. And I think I hop off at this point, don't I? Yes, I do.
So talking about the variable standards, Mr. Kirsch alluded to the DESA, the Panorama, discipline, and chronic absenteeism. So again, DESA is the Duverick Student Strength Assessment. This is our universal SEL screener. And so all of these are in percentages, because we wanted to make sure that we highlighted that this is in relation to the student enrollment, because we didn't want to dismiss some of our smaller schools that also sometimes have a larger need. And so going through this, we went through the DESA, and this is the percentage of students that, per that enrollment, that were on a three-tier piece. So students fall into three ranges. One is need for instruction, a typical skill, or a skill strength. And so this is the percentage of students based on need for instruction compared to their enrollment. And then moving over to the Panorama is where we have our sense of belonging. It's a subsection of our school climate survey, and I think that the SEL counselors are a great heartbeat to that, in that building that school sense of belonging. And so this is the inverse of that, so this is the percentage of students that did not feel like they had a sense of belonging in connection with the school. And then as we continue to move over on the graph, you'll see discipline. This is the total number of referrals per school comparative to the student enrollment. And then again, lastly, with the chronic absenteeism, which is students who have missed 18 full days of school, regardless if they're excused or unexcused. And again, all in combination with percentage of enrollment. And then we combined all of those to increase that total combined need, where we create what we call our heat map, so you can kind of see the variance between schools. I do like to preface that even with all this data, it is just a point-in-time measure of our schools. It doesn't talk about the totality of the schools or all the different pieces. Again, I'm always cautious with that, in that this is just a point-in-time reference. And then jumping forward, talking about that staffing ratio. So we took all of that data, and then we used our staffing ratios. So based on that, we did the one base counselor per school, and then you can see the increased staffing ratio at the high schools based on their numbers. And then you see the two bolded ones, which are Journey and Woodbrook, and that's where we use that two additional staffing to support schools, based on the data you saw on the previous slide.
So just to sum up, our current model today is one social-emotional learning coach or counselor at each school for 24 FTEs that are currently being funded through one-time funds through the federal government, to a proposed model of one ASL, one social-emotional learning coach slash counselor at each school, and then a small bump based on that data for those to really look at those variables, for a total of 30 FTEs. That is coming to a cost of a little over $2.6 million. Questions?
As you know, I've always been a supporter of having more mental health supports in our schools. Our kids can't learn if that's not addressed. However, I guess I have misunderstood the role of SEL coaches. I thought that they were, we had the counselors, and then we had the SEL coaches that were working with staff to build resilience in kids and that. Where has that gone? Or is that part of this?
So when we originally did the position back in 2021, it was needs-based. So we noticed that schools had varying needs, so it was three different job descriptions, and that's where Mr. Kirsch talked earlier about working with HR and bringing that consistency. And so there were three positions. One, they could have chose to pull in another school counselor, they could have pulled in a mental health professional or social worker, or they hired the social-emotional counselor. And so the social-emotional counselor has kind of become an overarching term for that, and so there are some varying needs. They are still providing the supports, but it does have variance between schools. And so that's where we're talking about the consistency through the professional development and working with HR, and really honing in that piece now.
Okay, so a lot of these functions are being done by these folks, and the counselors, or the counselors are not a different category?
So...
I'm a wee bit, I mean, if you did the trial and now you're sort of rearranging the people to be the most defective, I love that, but I still feel like I need to have some explanation.
Yeah, absolutely.
How we got there.
So we've always encouraged schools, and schools are doing a great job, and I think of like our school-based intervention teams. So we have school-based mental health teams where they look at cases, how do they best support in those pieces? And so it's always a collaborative effort of how do we come and support our students together? I would say that they have held true to that they are helping build the resiliency. A lot of it is time and place resiliency in some of those crisis pieces, so referencing the resiliency. And one of the things that, talking with a lot of the principals and going into the schools, is the locus of control that students have now, and that sense of dealing with the everyday stressors is hard. And so these are also individuals that, in coordination with school counselors and school-based teams, that they are providing a lot of the immediate support to help re-regulate, and then again, becoming a flourishing member of that school community.
Thank you.
I was gonna say that, I think that is, and I think kind of being newer to this, my biggest question is, and I think on the, on the middle and high school, I see more of the difference in counselors and SEL coaches. I think on the elementary side, that's where I'm trying to, like, you know, I have a principal of, you fill in the blank, school, and how do I think about, like, I have a child with a need, and how do I, like, how are we deciding kind of SEL coach, counselor, and how are those, like, is there a standard way those are working?
Yeah, and that is, I don't want to allude to that part of the work as much as, there are distinct responsibilities for our school counselors.
Yeah.
And then our SEL, and part of our work is that SEL counselor, because we, you've caught up on, right? SEL coach, SEL counselor?
Right, exactly.
It's a qualification issue.
Got it.
What are the licensures and certification?
That was gonna be my next question, is how do, what are the licensing pieces on these students?
Yes, there are those with certain qualifications. Yes, there are those with certain qualifications, licensure, that would qualify them as an SEL counselor. We've been working with the HR on that. While others are classified as SEL coach, just, but their roles are similar. Like, they're working with kids directly versus school counselors, while they're working with kids directly, also have responsibilities with regard to content, classes, family life. There are other things that are on their plate. I would never say that they are mutually exclusive, as much as there are going to be overlaps with social workers, SEL counselors, coaches, school counselors. And that's why I was, even with that net, it's like, yeah, there's some fibers that overlap, but we want to, that's the value added that I'm putting forward, to distinctly have their job description. This is what we expect, this is what we'd want to see, and these are the outcomes, based on those evidence-based practices. But I don't think we're fully, by any means, fully there yet.
So in your timeline, Kevin, you had the school safety?
Student safety coaches.
Yeah, and then I know that when I talked with Miles a while ago, I mean, the school nurses were also part of this overall health team, basically. Is that still the case?
Yeah, well, I do think that that's part of the underpinning. Student safety coaches, if we remember, those were our response to bringing down the school resource officers.
Right.
Right? So it was, yes, relationship-based, not as clinical.
Okay.
Right? So they're not doing that individual, like, true sessions, like a qualified mental health professional would, but they are doing.
Are they talking with each other, the professionals in the building?
That is my take, and if not, that's what we've been constantly promoting through our school-based intervention team structures and/or threat assessment teams, and utilizing case management and getting people to the table, including even IEP teams and special ed. That is the ideal. It's being done in places, but we could always improve. I would never want to throw out there that that wouldn't be on the table either.
Is that mental health contract would continue? I know you're, that's not what you're presenting on right now, but is that the plan?
The plan is to utilize as many outside providers for service fee, service, right? Fee per service. That we can, including MOUs and contracts with our community service board. So we are exploring even more options to open that up with procurement and purchasing in our community.
Perfect, thank you.
So will these positions be hired at the building level, or how would that work?
That is the proposal. We're looking at a different approach. I don't think it would be as pure as, oh, yes, school-based, hire these professionals, and you're responsible. We want to propose a, yes, the school would hire, but we, our team, would be responsible, directly involved with, here is the professional development we want to offer. Those goals that we have would be upfront, and a little bit different than how we've done business in the past.
And Kevin, you would be participating with the building level folks in terms of hiring that person, right? Because I think that's important.
Correct. And we've done that, we've, well, I've done that in the past with my work in special education, when there are primary, right? Like, our previously school psychologists or folks at the building, it was like, yes, please have us there. We can add to the whole process and, yeah, make recommendations, definitely.
I think we've been fortunate as a school division to get the initial grant to start working on mental health, and that was, you know, it was a $200,000 grant, that was great. And it's been great having the COVID-related funding to carry it forward. Everyone I've talked to who has mental health, you know, people in their schools have, you know, I've not heard any negative comments, and I think it's incredibly important for our kids that they have this resource in the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks, Miles.
Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. And I'm just going to go over two short sections before we close out the work session. First, state revenue updates. But before I go over the revenues, this is a reminder of our funding gap of $13.3 million. We anticipate revenues at this point next year of $260 million and expenditures of $273 million. So that represents a 13.3 gap that we need to address over the next few weeks. Dr. Haas previewed this last week. There are some ways we can work through the process, and the first is to plan for higher The timeline for getting new projections for state revenues will be sometime in mid-March. While this will still not likely be the final budget amount, it will be a budget that is closer to what we'll actually end up with. Last week, the House and Senate passed their own budget versions, and now we are in what's called the crossover period, which means that each chamber is reviewing each other's budget proposals. They're making changes in order to come up with a compromise spending plan, and they're scheduled to adjourn that session on March 9th. And so we do anticipate having a version of the budget sometime in mid-March. Here's a summary overview of the financial impacts to ACPS specifically for the two budget versions that have been presented. These are, the amount shown on the slide are the additional revenue amounts that we would receive should they be enacted. Both budget plans provide significant increases in K-12 funding when compared to the December-introduced budget for FY25, as well as the FY24 budget. So here are some of the statewide particulars. Both plans include at least a 3% salary increase for SOQ-funded physicians, which is equivalent to what we currently have in the draft funding request. The Senate plan includes $400 million overall to remove the cap on state funding for K-12 support positions that was enacted during the Great Recession and that we heard about during the state revenue work session. The Senate also provides $243 million overall over the two years to restore and reforecast the general fund payments provided in lieu of the K-12-dedicated sales tax on grocery and personal hygiene products. That would have been collected had the tax not been eliminated. So that's the hold harmless that was taken away that this version now puts back. The compromised spending plan will fall somewhere in between these two scenarios in total dollar amount. That's the typical pattern we've seen in the past. So we can expect to see an increase in revenue to us of somewhere between $1.7 and $6 million. Are there any questions about these numbers or anything in particular? Next, I'll turn over to expenditures and talk about a planned approach to closing the gap on the expenditure side. We thought it would be fitting to just provide you a review of our annual RIF process, or reduction in force, which is not changing. We're not proposing any changes to it. This is just a review of what we do every year, per school board policy. And this approach is the same as what we do each year when we even present balanced funding requests. The FY25 draft funding request has already accounted for these RIF factors. And reductions may occur for the following reasons, one being the enrollment and demographic changes. That ties directly to the budgeted enrollment decrease, nondiscretionary change that I presented to you earlier this evening. That was the 6.03 FTE. In addition, any one-time allocations that were provided to schools this year get eliminated. And if there are any changes in staffing standards, that can be accounted for in the annual RIF process. Trends show that we are typically able to hire back most of our full-time employees. Outside of the RIF process, here's our planned approach for closing the funding gap. We talked about revenues already, and as we get closer to budget adoption, we will consider one-time funding for additional revenues as well, probably in April. For expenditures, the steps on the following slides are currently under consideration, and all may not be necessary, depending on the size of the gap in April, when the budget needs to be balanced. First, we will plan operating budget reductions or non-personnel reductions first. Examples include deferring the purchases of stuff or capital items. We can pause these for a year and not have a significant impact on student instruction. Second, we are analyzing historical spending and adjusting in underspent areas. This will take time, and we'll work with departments and staff to get this right. Third, we'll review organizational structures and programs for effectiveness, efficiency, and streamlining. We're looking for areas to consolidate and figure out areas where we may not be meeting the goals that we had established for certain programs. Fourth, we may reduce the number of budgeted positions. This means that we may be able to reduce positions based on attrition and changes from year to year. In practical terms, it means not hiring for vacant positions until we know that the money is there as part of budget management. And our goal is to reduce in central office and department-based positions first, and the percentage of reductions will exceed the percentage of necessary reductions in school-based positions. So that kind of puts it in priority order. And then finally, we may need to relook at the proposals that are presented tonight or next week. For example, we may need to adjust the timing or the amount of the compensation increase, or adjust the number of FTEs in any proposals. We don't at this point plan on having to eliminate proposals. So if you wanted to discuss our approach, or if you have questions about it, this would be the time to do that.
Just remind us what the timing is, kind of back in your, back in the kind of the timeline of when we would, obviously, not till after we get updated budget numbers from the state, but kind of where do you see us having that kind of conversation?
So these are the dates that are upcoming that we can't talk about, but even going beyond that, April 25th is the budget adoption date, so we do need to request a balanced budget on the 25th. There's a school board meeting two weeks prior to that, April 11th, so I imagine all of those decisions will need to be made on that April 11th date. And then these are the interim times at which that can be discussed. But I would say April 11th is would be a key milestone date.
Thanks.
All right, well, if, you can also, as a reminder, email any questions, responses will be sent to the entire board if you send them, or, and this is available to the public as well, budget@k12albomoral.org. And we are scheduled to go over three more proposals at next week's work session. If there's any other requests for information, we can fit those in next week as well. So look forward to hearing from you. Maya, I know we thank you every time, but it's not enough. So thank you so much, and thanks to everyone involved in this work.
Thank you, Ms. Kumazawa.
All right, last we have school board or other business, superintendent business, anybody? No business? No business for anyone? All right, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.